Friend that's a director that we went to college with, that we're gonna maybe share a performance with. And attend a musical performance as well. Part of our trip for the historical education of the Atlanta area is the Center for Civil and Human Rights, Jimmy Carter Presidential Library, Martin Luther King Junior National Site, Museum of High Art, the CNN Studio Tour, and more areas of the greater Atlanta area. Cost for the trip is $6.95 per student. Band boosters have already, are kicking in $75 per student to help bring that cost down. Chaperones are $8.52, and theirs is a little more for double occupancy, for hotel, and extra seat on the bus to stretch out.
That's important.
That's a good idea.
It's broken down into four payments, and of course, the mission of the band boosters is that no student is left behind because of finances. So we do have financial aid where students can request, and can either receive a reduced rate of the trip, or sometimes we'll even pay for an entire student's trip, depending on where they are financially. And so, the more we're able to fundraise, the more we can make that happen.
Requirements that we have for the trip is, number one, it is a band trip, and so 90 percent plus participation for our students is a requirement. And that's partly due to instrumentation. You can't just say, "You know, John, you've been playing tuba for a long time. It's great." But we really need a nobleist, so would you step up? Never works out well. And to do a clinic, and to do performance in that area, we need that. The other part of it, of course, is we do need chaperones. We love the students. We love working with them. However, Mike and I, just doing that with 100 students would be very tough. So, we do have a requirement of 20-plus parrot chaperones as well. And that's partly how we travel to, in small groups. Breaking decision-making into four or five students is so much better than 12 or 13 students, as you can imagine. And of course, solid participation in fundraising, though we've had amazing coordination with our band boosters in fundraising, and it's really been awesome. And Karen's been on that committee as well, so thank you for your time. And with that news, you know, we still have that support. We have the payment schedule. You can see October, November, January, and March, again, sort of guided by our parent and student trip committee. There is financial aid available. There's lots of ways that we did. The craft show was the second-best that we've had. We're excited to get all of the final numbers in, but that was huge. If you came out and enjoyed that, thank you for supporting. We do have a good time. Students who get excited about 6:00 AM, and greeting vendors, too. And I mean that sincerely. There was a seventh grader did 14 hours. So it was really nice. And beyond that, I would just mention that we have a mantra with our trips, and that is that it is safe, efficient, and fun. And you start with safe. If you're not safe, you're not, you know, nothing is fun. It's terrible. So, we do this in multiple ways. We travel in small groups. We also have bus groups, and we have room groups. We do encourage students to sign up with different students in mind for that, so just so you don't spend too much time together. Space makes the heart grow fonder. We also, we function as a team. We do have overnight hotel security. I will assure you, though, both Mike and I have been on many trips, and our students have been terrific all the way through. And some of our rules are formed from other trip experiences that are not ours, and other school districts, and so on, and we're glad to keep it that way. So our students have been great. That's why we do this. Otherwise, we wouldn't, honestly. We do have a set of guidelines. We do get those notarized and signed by parents and students. So we're upfront with everybody. We have that meeting in April. Bus drivers, they change overnight. That's becoming more and more rare. There's a lot of companies that don't travel overnight now because of different things, but we were fortunate to procure that. We also, we know that AP tests are coming up the following two weeks. That's why we get back so early on the Sunday. And also, we do have a quieter bus, and some time available for students that need to refresh and review, or collaborate and whatnot. So, safe, efficient, and fun. That's what makes that happen. So, if the trip were, we did not achieve our goal of the amount of chaperones, or the amount of students to participate, for whatever reason, no problem. Money comes back to everybody that's invested, and we'll try again in two years. We've had great success. We've loved being able to do this. Hopefully, the process has allowed students and parents to buy in. So, there's our brief presentation. Any questions?
So, how, again, my kids are now more reviewed, and then, we're not in band. So how many kids are in band now?
We have 115 this year.
At the high school?
At the high school.
And then, how does that roughly break down between the grades?
The grades?
Relatively even, or is it?
Let's see, we have 33, I believe it is, seniors. Am I right, Karen? Okay. I believe we have 19 sophomores. I believe we have about 33 or 34 freshmen, and then the rest would be juniors. Sorry, I didn't.
And so, this is open to all of them?
This is open to every.
Again, I'm familiar, more familiar with the choir trip, which is the, just the older students. So this is, so, band students would have the opportunity to do this twice?
They would, yeah. And, you know, we do auditions each and every year to Honesty, and on that audition, we place them into wind ensemble or symphonic band. And it's really important to us that they have the identity of being in band, regardless of what band you're in, and that both bands get similar experience on the trip. So we're actually, we're traveling together. Our small groups might be mixed, and so on, but when we clinic, we'll clinic with symphonic band, and we'll clinic with wind ensemble. And at the very end of our performance, and we'll do that at the spring at home as well, but it's part of the trip, is to prepare us for the spring concert, we will bring everybody together and perform as well. So.
And I don't know if I've just not retained it or not, but the whole process of, that you described, Mike, about how the kids were coming up with the ideas, and weaning it down, I mean, that's awesome. Have you always done it that way?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just didn't realize. Okay.
It kind of gives the students more buy-in.
Oh, sure.
As well.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's really, I mean, that's a skill that is an awesome skill for all of them.
It is a lot of fun, and you know, one of the biggest things, though, is really with the finance piece. And that's why it's so important that the boosters have made that commitment, that no student is left behind because of finances. That is, in the essence, why we do fundraisers. And it's great to have the private lesson scholarships and trip scholarships that we do, but when it comes to this, you want every student to be able to say, "I wanna go." How do we make that happen? And has the band boosters do that?
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I also have the choir, but not the band experience. I know choirs use Bright Spark, and have always spoken very highly of the support and the service. Have you done Bright Spark before?
We have. Our last trip to St. Louis, we used them. And the person that we deal with is a band director, Mark Arzalainian, which is wonderful. And we had, it's really a lot of fun, but my former high school band director is a tour guide that works for Bright Spark. So last trip, we had him as well, and he was willing to make that happen again if we used Bright Spark. So, it just worked out again, so we're very fortunate. Some say he has better jokes. I don't know.
That's nice, too, when you're in the area, and he'll scope out, okay, we gotta move equipment into this place. This is the best way to go around the back. And he's got that all planned, and he knows what it's like to move in and out, and move large groups in a fast amount of time.
That's awesome. Anybody else? Well, thanks for coming tonight. Thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance to the students and giving them these opportunities.
Absolutely. All right. Our next discussion item, well, we have a plethora of amazing Hazlitt Secondary administrators and staff in the back here. Talk about student achievement data. I don't know who's gonna do, okay, Diane Newman's raising her hand, is coming first.
Thank you for having us this evening. This is my MTSS coach this year. She's new, so we wanted to make sure you saw her face, and she's gonna talk to you a little bit, Colleen Pringle.
Hi.
Your children had her as a science teacher.
Yes, they do.
She's now our MTSS coach, and she's transitioned beautifully into that position. So we're gonna talk to you about academic achievement. As we know, that's primarily why we're here. And there's many ways that we measure that. We're gonna talk to you about primarily the standardized test achievements and the ways we do that. PSAT is a standardized test that we've used in eighth grade for, you can see, the last three years. And it was used in the fall, and it was an optional test. It was not a state mandated test. It was a test that we opted the kids in, because we knew they would be taking it again in ninth, tenth, and eleventh. This year, the state changed things a little bit. Our eighth graders will not be taking the M-Step for their English and their math, so they'll be taking the PSAT eight, nine in the spring. So instead of giving them the PSAT eight, nine in the fall, again in the spring, and then again the next spring, and then the next spring, and then the next spring, we thought they had enough touches with that test that just doing it in the spring was enough. So, you can see our three years of data for the PSAT, and again, this was done in the fall for our eighth graders. The next is the M-Step, and the M-Step is a test that we give to our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in math and ELA. And our eighth graders took the social studies as well last year. This is our M-Step combined six, seven, eight data for math. Again, this is a standardized test we take in the spring, and you can see the top one, the blue line there, is our Hazlitt data. And just a quick reference for you, the, if you look at the scale score on the side, it's 30 to 60. So don't be deceived by these giant gaps. This isn't zero to 100. This is just a piece that's been expanded a bit. So it looks, I think, a little bit more larger than it is. However, the good news is, if you look at, well, the very bottom line is Ingham County's average scores. The red line right above that is the state average scores for the last, again, from 2015 to 18. The green line, the one in the middle there, is our free and reduced student scores. So, some of our at-risk students. And then the top line is the average of our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math scores. So, we're quite proud of how well our students have been doing in that area. And even, I guess, the high point is, even our at-risk students, our free and reduced lunch students, are doing better than the state average and the Ingham average. And again, this is for math for the past four years.
Mr. Newman, just a minute. So, when you say "our" free and reduced students, you need Hazlitt.
Hazlitt, yes, our.
And are those students still included in the blue line?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. No? And it's percentage, not score?
Yes.
Right, so there's a percentage that are at risk.
Percent, yep. So then, this one is our ELA, English Language Arts scores. And you can see, again, the lines represent the same thing. The yellow line is Ingham. The red is our state scores. The green is our free and reduced lunch, and then the blue is our students. And again, this is the past three years, four years, sorry, in ELA.
Did one grade or another drive that drop, or is that?
Well, in just a moment. The next, let's jump to the next slide. This slide breaks it down by grade level. So if you look by grade level, this is the last three years. We actually have, you never want less than three years when you're looking primarily at data like this, so you're looking at a line. You need three points. So, this is 16, 17, and 18's data. And you can see it's broken down. We did how many students were above and below the benchmark. So, you can see ELA for sixth, seventh, eighth, math, sixth, seventh, and then our social studies, which is what our sixth grader, or, excuse me, eighth graders took. And I think, Chris, the number that, if you look down, our eighth graders, I mean, it's pretty consistent. We were 69, 69, 64. If anybody dropped something down, or at seventh grade, ELA, you can see a dip in this year's, the 62. That's the only thing I can think of. We would like that number to be up in the 70s. That's our goal. You can see 72 in 2016 for our seventh grade, and in our eighth, in 2017. So we're looking, and we were very close in 16 and 17 for our eighth grade, and in sixth grade. So that's a number we're trying to work on this year. Our math is all over a little bit, if you're looking like from sixth grade math, seventh grade, eighth grade math. We are implementing spring math. I'm sure you've heard that program so far, and we're looking for great success. Was in a math class today, in geometry, eighth grade, sorry, not geometry. In eighth grade, L01, and the students were doing an equivalent fraction paper, and the answer was two-thirds, and many of the students had it in four-sixths, and the teacher was like, "Okay, you know, we just worked on this. You guys, you know, you have to be down to," but it was slope, is what they were talking about. It was really cool, because she was able to call back on that spring math, they, the kids had been, so they, right away, all were very clear on what that meant, and I can see great things with it. So we're anxious to see what it does to our math scores next year.
So, Diane, if you look back on the slide, it looked like pretty much all of the trend lines went down last year, so, I mean, was it an issue of the test, or something? Did they make any changes on the test, or what they were looking for?
No.
They supposedly shortened slightly.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if there was something.
And that's a good point, so I don't think you're comparing apples to apples, really.
Okay, yeah.
It's not as long as it used to be. And now our eighth graders will be doing the PSAT, so they won't even be taking the M-Step.
Okay. I was just wondering.
It looks like everybody dropped down.
Yeah.
Right. So, but, the social studies, are those social studies?
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, that's a big jump from 60 to 70, but then, kind of, how do I process the fact that those numbers are much lower than ELA and math, as a non-social studies or something? What is that? What do you guys see there?
Well, part of it, I think, too, is that we don't, it's not a focus in our elementary schools because of the focus on the ELA and the math. So we're doing a lot of picking up, and we're teaching things that, if you looked at an ideal curriculum map, K-12, names at K-5, that's not, we're not blaming, but it's just, there's concepts that were, and it's interesting, the data that we get, M-Step data is, outside of this, the data that we get back as far as our weak areas, it's very poorly done, in my opinion. And they get you these triangles up and down, and then these little snowplates, and it's, you need work in this. But you never get access to the actual test questions to know really where are we, we get, what was it, it'll say like, Civil War history. Okay, that's kind of big. You know, like, what specifically, or what kind of questions was it?
Was it dates? Was it people?
Exactly. So, what we did, what was really nice, is our social studies department, we'll talk about this in just a minute, we sat down and looked at that data, even though it was, again, in my opinion, weak data, we looked at what triangles were down, we need work on, or what ones were up, where we were showing a lot of growth. And what did that tell us? And then, what was interesting was, what we find is, we have to spiral back some more. That is one area that we need to do more of. And I think with our new, the way they divided up the standards, we're able to do that. So, we're having those conversations, which is kind of cool.
So, we did, on the previous two slides, we showed the trends with the county and the state and everything. What would the trend line look like with the eighth grade?
We are still way above. It's up, yes.
It's similar, it's just lower absolute numbers.
Is this spring?
Yes, this was M-Step last year's spring.
So, these kids all be at grade 12, just current?
Right. And there's a cohort thing there as well. You know, you'll see that with our SAT data. It's amazing, the cohort, you can see a cohort that had a lot of strong students, and how that data just dips. Another test that we do, this is not a standardized test that the state has mandated, but when I started MTSS, we were doing AIMS Web as a screener, and it gave us another piece of data to help identify some students that may be at red score, needing some extra supports. We used that for many years and had great success with it, but at a secondary level, a screener like that isn't as reliable, and doesn't give you the kind of data that we had, we grew. I mean, we became more knowledgeable, and we needed more data, so we've now moved to NWEA, and this has really provided us with a lot more diagnostic data that we can say, well, we kind of already knew these kids were already at risk. What are the risk areas, and what can we help them with? So Colleen's gonna talk a little bit about that.
So our NWEA test is an adaptive test, and they have questions that challenge, maybe if you're, they're an eighth grader, or just a high achiever, as high up to entry college level questions, or it can go as low as elementary. It gives each student a RIT score, which is like where they are ready to learn and ready to begin their instruction. The RIT score relates to a percentile as well, and we use those percentiles to identify students who need to be put into strategies classes, or to get interventions. The old RTI triangle, I don't know if you remember that, that has three tiers. The NWA test, high, the blue category, and high average, the green category, that would be like our tier one. And so if you add those together for each grade level, sixth grade had 63 percent after we did our testing, this was for spring, it says, spring data. 63 percent would be in that first tier one, 59 for seventh grade, and 64 for the eighth grade. Our tier two is the yellow and the orange added together, and for sixth grade, it was 31 percent. Seventh grade, there was 26 percent of the kids, and 27 percent in the eighth grade. And then you can see the red, which would be tier three, we don't have to add that to anything, and it's seven, 14, and nine. If you look at the black category over there, there's the RIT score. Our mean or average RIT score was 232 in sixth grade, and the normative data says our fall data for sixth grade should be around 217. So we're above that, well above that. And seventh grade, their normative data is 222. Our average was 236, you see there. And eighth grade, the normative, 226, and we were at 241. Here's just another look at that. These are the projected growths for each grade level. So, the diamond, the yellow diamond, is the projected growth that NWEA said our students should reach from fall to winter, then to spring. And you can see, we exceeded that in sixth and seventh grade, and in eighth grade, we met that projected growth.
What does RIT stand for? Is that an acronym?
It is. It's like a scale. It's the Roush Scale, and it's, you know, like inches or feet, or it's a scale they use for ability level. And this was all of our math data right there. Do you have any other questions about math?
This was the test in the spring.
In the spring.
This is administered three times a year. Fall, winter, spring. It's like, we used to do the AIMS Web, fall, winter, spring. This is not what we do, fall, winter, spring.
So this is showing their growth, but, and we did just NWEA test in the fall, our starting benchmark this year, but we don't have any growth yet for the year, so we will, again, test in January for our winter benchmark, and then May for spring.
This is still a new test for us, and then our next staff meeting, we're actually gonna have everybody with a Chromebook, and teachers will be able to go in and just their students, they'll be able to access their student scores. We used to take like our AIMS Web data, and they could make pairings for reading partners, or for math strategies, or reading strategies. So with this data now, teachers can go even further. And they will provide you with activities that they can do, lessons that you can do, majority of your class is low in this area, here's an activity, or here's, you know, some resources for you. So it's, it's really a cool tool that we haven't even really, I mean, we're just starting to chip away at it.
This is our spring data for reading, and, again, if you add those categories together for tier one, it was 58 percent for sixth grade, 60 percent for seventh, and 55 for eighth. Tier two, the yellow and orange, were 34 percent, 34 percent seventh grade, and 37 eighth grade. And tier three, eight, six, and eight.
Relatively similar.
Mm-hmm, it is for each grade level. It's interesting to look at it, broken down like that. The RIT score over on the right, in the black, 221 was our sixth grade, and it's 211 for the norm. Seventh grade, we had 225, and the norm was 214. In eighth grade, we got 226, and norm was 217. And if we look at reading, you can see the projected growth with the yellow diamond, and we showed some excellent growth. I think it's partly due to not only English Language Arts classes, teaching, reading strategies, but science and social studies have been working on, you know, reading apprenticeship strategies, and working with informational text as well. Any questions on that?
So, what do we do with that test data? Because we're saying you can do as task is, and then just let it sit on its shelf and get dusty. So for the PSAT, this is what's really cool about that test, and I know the high school does this as well. We take that data, and then they actually give you, you can break it down to, is it a, they rate the question, is it a difficult question, medium, or easy? And then they'll say, how many of your kids missed it? And then, or they'll say, these are problem areas for you. And then you actually get to see the question. And actually, at the high school level, last year, we had the teachers take some of the tests, so that they could see what the kids were experiencing. Because the more we can familiarize them with this test, and they can see what they're doing, when they get into that test setting, they are ready to take it and show what they know, instead of going, how do you do this, and what is this asking me for? So we've been giving them a lot more, again, touches with that test. So, we're excited that we'll get this data in the spring, and be able to look at where are the problem areas. And that will, it'll be our eighth grade data, but we'll be able to go, what are we missing at seventh and sixth? So we can compare that. And then, and it does, there is a comparison to the NWEA information. Again, we're just starting to dig into this data that we get through NWA, and it shows you, here's your NWEA score, here's your projection for the PSAT or the M-Step. It's pretty cool how they'll help you with that. So kids can establish action plans individually, and our students are going to be setting goals for themselves. Here was my fall score, here was what I wanted to do in the winter. Because the more buy-in you get with these tests, the better students are gonna do. They just see it as another test. So, sometimes I wonder if our data is as accurate as it could be, because kids don't, they really don't want to take. But if we show them, these are valuable, and here's what they can tell you about yourself as a learner, and us as a school, you get a little bit better data. In our department meetings, again, we, at all our department meetings, we looked at our M-Step data, and what our best instructional practices, what areas do we need to be looking at, and we put that data into our school improvement plan. And then again, the same with NWEA. We're looking at data analysis, and it just, it's helping Colleen, as she's forming her strategies classes, because at the middle level, we still do pull out students during their explore hours to help them with math and reading skills that maybe they have some deficiencies in. So this year, we kind of shook up our leadership team structure just a little bit, not too much, but we have actually three level, well, four, as you can see there, four types of teams. The first one is our courageous leadership team, and everybody on the staff comes to that. For example, we had a meeting last week, and a teacher brought up that she'd like to do something a little bit different with our school of Student of the Month. So we, as a whole, we get input from the whole staff, and we form a little committee of people, and they can move forward with what they want that to look like. We wrote a vision statement. It's been a long time since we've looked at a vision statement. So our first meeting in September, it was amazing. We thought it would take us a couple meetings. These, we said, I think there were like, what, 15 of us? And we wrote a vision statement right there, like that. We put it in front of the staff, and knocked over, and they voted on it, and we're gonna videotape it and start posting it around the building. So that's that courageous leadership team. It's after school, and we meet once per month, and, you know, you can stop in when you need to, if you have something you'd like to work on, and we've got a team working on our learning watch. I mean, it's just kind of cool to see teachers embrace that, and want to move and grow the school culture. Our data team does take the data that we just looked at, and that consists of roughly eight to 10 members. We have a counselor, a special ed teacher, a representative from each of the content areas, and then each grade level, and we do sit down and look at the data, and then look at our interventions, and our strategies, and our stat needs, and it's just kind of a look at how are we supporting our students. We meet three times a year to look at that data. Our grade level teams meet, our teams, grade level teachers meet on their own, usually during their preps once a week, but then we give them some time at our staff meetings, But then we give them some time at our staff meetings where we actually have a dashboard that they look at. And through that dashboard, they, who are our students who are at risk? I just met with probably fifteen eighth graders who have Ds and Es and at risk. And it was kind of cool. Having been at the high school, I can say, this isn't going to work well for you next year. You've got to get something and go in here. So that was really neat to have those conversations. But our grade level teaming, I send that information back to them and say, here's what we're doing. Please look out for this student like that. So we meet monthly there. And then our school department chairs, we have from each of the department areas, a chairperson in the content areas. And we meet, I meet with them right before staff meet, or their department meetings. We discuss what the agenda is. Because it, I can lead it, but I want them, I can lead our conversation, but I want them to lead their department. Because it, you know, sometimes when it's organically and it's coming from your peers, that, that moves that forward better. And we do talk about our standardized test data. And then we're looking at common assessments. We have the new iQuest science curriculum that we're working on. We have a new sixth grade curriculum that we're looking at and working with. So there's a lot of things that, the spring math, the math department. So there's a lot of individual department concerns and needs that all feed into that, that data that we look at. So here's just some interventions that we do. We do have the math strategies, the language arts strategies. And when we put students in there, we want them not to live there. We want them to just visit. So we use progress monitoring data. We do use the AIMS web at that point so that we can, and it's real motivating for a student to say, here's what's going to get you out of here. Here's where you are. Let's get you there. So the progress monitoring is used to establish the goals and the exit criteria for all those. We're fortunate to have sections at each grade level for math. And we've continued that even at eighth grade. Math goes at a pace at some of our, especially our move-in kids or just our students who struggle a little bit with math, it's necessary for them. Language arts, we have two in sixth grade. But what we find is we've given kids so much reading that, and now it's just practice. And we need to be doing that in the classroom. So we only have one at seventh and one at eighth for the students. Again, a lot of our move-in students or just students who are still a little bit on the bubble that need extra help. Homework labs, I know Brandy started a couple last year. And it's, it's something that we, it's hard to monitor this real well, but we want to provide opportunities. We have Dutch Hills, which is awesome because it's right there in Dutch Hills. And so the kids have a community center they can go to. Last week, they got new carpet, so we should have the kids there. But this week, we're back running. We have three mandatory after-school labs at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We have teachers that are housing those. They're following up with students and looking at their grades and their homework. So those are successful. And then, you know, I'm the heavy that you weren't there because we have an attendance and so we monitor that. So it's not the best. But I will say, I've got a couple kids that are kind of excited because they're seeing their grades change. They're seeing that when you do do your work, things happen. So.
Likewise, we had a six-week rotation change in sixth and seventh grade for math and language arts, as well as a seventh grade rotation and sixth grade rotation change. And a few of our kids get, did get to move out and go back into a like choir rotation or robotics or whatever. And they were very excited, like they felt like, hey, I've done my work. I've accomplished something. I get to be in the rotation. And so it's kind of fun to watch and see.
So we've had some academic points of pride. As you all know, you had kids go through, our logo is pride, prepared, respectful integrity, decisions engaged. We were the first to Ingham County for sixth and seventh grade math. Proud of that. Second for seventh and eighth grade BLA. And second for our eighth grade social studies. We do offer at the middle level some high school credit offerings in algebra right now. We have ninety-one students. And we have seventy-five in eighth grade algebra one classes. And sixteen of them are going up, or sixteen of them are seventh graders coming up to our eighth grade classrooms. We have fifteen eighth graders going over to do geometry. Side note, we have nineteen little fifth graders. And I said they're little, they're little, coming over every morning for our sixth grade math program. Super cool. And they put their stuff in Henry Gruntrow's classroom. It's so cute. And then they go down and then they leave a little early, pick it up, get on the bus, and go to Raleigh or Murphy. We have algebra two honors. We have one eighth grader. Wow, that's amazing, up at the high school taking algebra two honors. We have fifty-six French students that really grew this year compared to last year's, kind of flipped, Spanish and French. And thirty-nine Spanish ones. So they will get high school credits for all those courses. And then we will be doing the health requirement at the eighth grade level again this year. Any questions for us?
What questions might you have?
I had a couple I was going to ask. One is, you mentioned the NWEA three times and they still have M-Step. Do you, besides wanting to listen to students if they're important and making the difference, do you sense more anxiety about these things? Or has that been an issue with this testing? Or could it be the opposite where the more they take this and it becomes not a big deal then to take this test?
I felt like NWEA, they were not very anxious about. It's not timed. You know, we give some points to the teachers to talk about, like, do your best. Some of the questions are going to be too hard, but then it adapts and it gets easier. It's not timed. You have the long as you need to take. They have double periods. We make a special schedule for that.
I think, you know, I, I used to think we did test too much, but I think we've gotten it to a nice number. Let me let you know after the spring. I'm thinking, I've done the high school, I haven't done the middle school yet. But I almost think we need to be teaching that grit and rigor, that you can sit for that amount of time focused and take a test. So I, I almost think we need to be doing that as much as we are. The, the three times a year we do the NWEA is not, it's not a tremendous amount. It's just enough to give us that data and to give kids an experience. It's an online test-taking experience for them too, which is nice because so is the M-Step. So I, I, no, I, I used to think so, but I think we've gotten it down to a comfortable, again, I'll let you know after the spring. So far, I'm thinking we, it's like, what, what we're doing is just enough. It gives us a good amount of data and it teaches the kids that, you know, these, this is life. I mean, I, there's so many other ways I'd like to test kids, but this is how they're going to go through. I think we're, we're not helping them if we're not exposing them to this before they get up to college.
And the NWEA is a national test too, correct? So do you, have you looked at the data for where, or is that that norm?
Yes, that's that RIT score.
So that's the?
We're doing very well. And it'll be nice when we can compare ourselves. That was always like on the AIMS web, it was like, ooh, look how great we are. But as soon as we started getting a couple years' worth of data, I was like, ooh, we, we, we should be, you know, we need to be doing this. So it's, it'll be nice when we compare ourselves to ourselves. Because again, that's what we want to do with the M-Step and the PSAT. Like, are we showing growth compared? Because it always looks good when you should compare yourself to the state of Michigan or its Hope County. But boy, we want to keep showing growth ourselves.
So the seventh graders who are in Algebra I and the fifteen eighth graders who are in Geometry, if they continue, they would be in Calc II. When we're at high school.
Yep.
And we could be looking at seventy-five students, Algebra I, seventy-five students for Calc I when they're seniors. Would count them all in there?
Yeah.
So do we have a capacity?
We're sure.
And absolutely. Staff can answer that question when they come up.
There's a long way between Algebra I and calc for those kids.
Yes, there is.
And it depends on their career goals and their college aspirations and, yeah.
I would say that if we could get between fifteen, sixty of those kids into AP Calc S seniors, we're doing a pretty nice job. And typically, that's about what we have is fifty to sixty students out of that seventy-five. I'd like to see personally that we get more kids into the geometry as eighth graders. I think we're lacking in that area. If you followed our data over the last probably eight to ten years, you're going to see a significant decline in the geometry numbers. We used to have a standalone geometry class at the middle school. So kids didn't have to walk back and forth. And, you know, Diane knows how I feel about that. We've had conversations about that in the past and also currently. But the goal should really be that, that sixteen should be, you know, I gotta believe there's eight more kids that could be doing Algebra I in the seventh grade. And, and right now, we don't have that. And it would be nice to have that because those eighteen, maybe the twenty-four, twenty-five, and, and that's, that's a nice opportunity to have that class at the middle school. The other nice thing about having that at the middle school is it gives them an opportunity really to, to be able to be ready for that Algebra Two honors class at the high school. Not that when they come over, they're not because they get that experience. But back when we had it, we had more kids going from Algebra Two honors to that pre-calculus. And Diane, you remember that when you were there, I'm sure. Some of your best kids were those kids that were Algebra Two honors kids as, as freshmen, quite frankly. And so we, we need to push that number up. It's been slowly declining over the last number of years. And if they're ready, oh, they're the way to push them.
I guess there's a lot of us in this room worried that, you know, Algebra I or geometry. And then we go, hey, why am I in this heavy math? I think I'm an exit lot right now and I'm not going to need that calc stuff.
So Brandy is going to begin here, but before we do that, I just want to say, you know, something, I'm sorry, my phone is ticking away at me. One of the things is with our M-Step is to keep in mind, and I've shared this before in the past, is the M-Step is the third day of the testing week for us. We start with on Tuesday SAT, which is a long exam. It's basically from eight AM to about twelve-thirty, one o'clock. That's for general ed students. For our special education students that may have extended time or separate setting or whatever, they may take the entire day plus the next day. The next day then is, on Wednesday, is the ACT work keys. And that's, you know, a test too that, that we're required to give. However, we really don't get much data back from that. And there's, you know, in all fairness to kids, the value that they see it is minimal. The sec, the third day then is the M-Step. And that's where Brandy is going to begin in just a second. And so after one long day of testing, a second day of testing, this is the third day. And I know in talking to area principals over the past number of years, what is the caveat for students to take it with best effort? Now, we're fortunate enough that eleven, twelve years ago, I stood before some of you, not all of you. And we implemented a board policy that said that as a part of your graduation requirements, you have to take all state, local, or federal assessments with best effort. And that's something that really has helped us. However, we do have students that probably don't put as much effort on the third day. So I want to frame that before we share with you some data that looks really good. But at the same time, just give you a little background information and continued information on how that week looks.
Are you stuck with that date?
What's that? Yeah. Let me answer the question. SAT, yes, that's a national testing date. We could, if we wanted to, switch the ACT work keys and the M-Step to a different week. The challenge with that is now you're interrupting one or two other weeks. The other thing that we have that comes into play, and all of you know that, is the week before is spring break. And we've been very fortunate that our students come back ready to take the SAT, the ACT work keys, and the M-Step. Some, some districts, some, some ISDs in their school districts are moving to the week before the current week that we have off with, or two weeks before the testing window. So just to share that, okay? Brandy, go.
Thank you. So you can see that, well, maybe you can't see, that graph is kind of small. The top one is for social studies. So we have fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen data. It's the same trend that you see in middle school, except for that forty-six percent that was proficient, now we're at seventy percent proficient. So it just gives you an idea how Diane said, so K five, it's not like a super strong focus. And we kind of have to, you know, start building their skills in social studies in sixth grade. You can see by the time they get to eleventh grade, our teachers have done a nice job and got our kids there. And we are highest, and they count, either this is the first or second, I have it on a later slide, in the county for social studies. Down, the bottom graph is science. And you'll see that eighteen data is missing, and that's because that's a pilot. And they like to try out all these new tests, but don't tell you anything about it afterwards. So we won't get data for the science M-Step, the new one, until two thousand and twenty, I believe. So, but you can still see, we follow the same trends. The blue is all of our students. The green is our free and reduced lunch kids. And then we have the ISD in the state at the bottom. One thing I do want to point out is even though our free and reduced kids are above the state average and the ISD average, we still have a gap there. And that is still something we need to focus and work on. And so some of our interventions, like the Dutch Hills intervention, where we have a teacher go to Dutch Hills, that's where a population lives there, you know, that don't have access to tutors or help at home. That's why we set that up, because we need to start focusing on helping those kids more. So, and it's shown in our data.
And Brandy, I mean, which years, both of them, they're giving those tests?
A lot of the years.
Both of them?
Yep.
Good question.
Okay. So here is our PSAT ninth and tenth grade. So it kind of makes me giggle when I think back to my high school experience because I took the, no PSAT, and I took the SAT twice. And I am pretty sure we didn't have pretty cool data like this for our schools to help us. We had to go in on a Saturday and pay for it. So this is pretty cool that they provide all this stuff now. So the PSAT ninth grade, so you can see where it says met both ERW. That's been evidence-based reading and writing. And then, of course, math means math. So you can see how we're doing. We're doing pretty good. We're going up each year. And I think that's just because our kids are getting more familiar with taking a test like that. Like they're getting more practice at it, they're getting better at it. So every year, we're going up, except for the evidence-based reading and math, you know, it went down a couple points. But look at the math from seventeen to eighteen, sixty-four to seventy-one. And then you can compare us to the state. So we're doing pretty good. And then the PSAT tenth grade, we see similar trends, except for that, we went from eighty-three to seventy-nine, and then the math went down a little bit there in tenth grade. What does it mean met both of those? What does that mean to meet that? That means that you met the benchmark and you're on the path to be ready for college. So they have like a score that's just for ninth grade, a score that's just for a tenth grade student. That means if this, if a student scores this benchmark score, they are on their way to be a successful college student. That's what that means. Kind of like, just like the ACT, just worded differently.
So Brandy?
Yep.
Sorry.
No problem.
So if they're, if a student is in that met both?
Yeah.
Then they're also in the two individual columns for ERW and math?
Yeah, that's right. And then here's our SAT data. So you can see our meet, the state means score, we're quite, I, I put our data in bold and the state is in regular font there. So you can see it better. The state wasn't, we're quite a bit higher than them each year. So we're doing pretty good. And then you know how the stock market goes up and there's a nice bubble and then it goes back down? It's the same idea. That cohort in two thousand and seventeen was a really strong academic class. And that's not to say that eighteen isn't. It just means that they were, eighteen's just as a good group of students. Just seventeen was a really good academically strong class. And you can see the acronyms, I mean, they're saying what they meant. So we're doing well there too. And then I have, here's a little, here's like our graph. And so now the green line means something different this time. It doesn't mean our free and reduced lunch kids. That means our peers. So that means schools that are similar to us demographically, you know, all across the board, like socioeconomic, race, all those things, ethnicities. And then down there is all the public schools and the nation. I believe this is where the, state of Michigan? Okay, in Michigan.
So the peer schools are also peers in Michigan?
Yes, yep. And then here are the ones that are in our ISD. So you can see that we, it looks like we're tied with East Lansing, but we're actually like point seven above them. We're in second next to Oakwood. And then here's our ACT data. So in sixteen and seventeen, we were still giving that as a class cohort, you know, that we could get back from when we did the G-M-Step. And then we switched to the SAT. So in seventeen and eighteen, we only had about forty students take it. And sixteen was two hundred and twenty students take it. But you can still see like our scores, how those forty students that are electing to take this, you know, for college applications, they're still doing pretty well. And then I put the percentages down in the bottom. Ninety-one percent of our students that took it would be ready for an English class in college. They'd get a B or like fifty percent chance of getting a B and seventy-five percent chance of getting a C. And that's what those make, those percentages mean for those different courses.
I also just want to, just to add that we do encourage our students, beginning in the fall when we have our class meetings with juniors, to consider taking the ACT. And as we talk to parents too, that are in their junior years or in their senior years deciding where they want to go to college, we do say, you know, it's, it's nice to have both. Because what we still are finding is, based on our data, that kids are scoring at a really high level for the ACT. They may be a little lower in the SAT, and that's what we would expect because that test is still a little bit new to them. But to have both scores and be able to apply it as needed makes a lot of sense. And it's just a part of our academic advising for our career track or career pathway kids, just to let you know. So just quickly, just a couple other things. Thanks, Brandy. So just quickly, just a couple other things, thanks Brandy, is just to talk quickly about what we do with the data in terms of the PSAT and SAT. And you can read that for yourself. It's very similar to what the middle school is doing. It's nice now having Diane at the middle school in terms of the system. Hopefully, over time, we're going to be able to share more 612 or 126, the information back and forth, because we do have a lot of the same alignment. Just a couple other things just to mention, our EWS, our early warning systems, that works with what we call our ABC data, attendance, behavior, and course performance. Again, you can read that. Brandy and I, along with Darren, Progress Monitor, students ninth through 12th grade and our student athletes this year, every three to four weeks, looking at Ds and Es, looking at a certain benchmark and cutoff for attendance, as well as behavior. Thank goodness, we don't have a whole lot of behavior to focus on. We have a little bit of attendance, but more students that are in that D to E range. And remember again, a D for us at the high school is like an E. So we want to take those students on as well. The other, and I would just mention, too, with the data, with the data for the EWS, ABC data, we do try to meet three times a year. Well, there it is, right there. Our data team consists of eight members. We have a dashboard that we've designed, that we've fine tuned over the years to be very efficient. Everything we do, when we talk about students, we put input that into this dashboard. So for example, Steve Cook. Steve Cook jumps up on the dashboard as 11th grader. He's got a behavioral issue, an attendance issue, and a course performance issue. That's the triple whammy, sorry, Steve. But if I talk to him as an 11th grader, say, it will, I'll put the notes right in, or I'll have somebody put that, the notes in. What are we doing about attendance? What are we doing about behavior? What are we doing about the course performance? What are some of the other strategies or supports we're putting into place? That's at the three, four week. And then at the nine week, if we're seeing some positives, or if we're still not seeing enough growth, we can look at what we're doing as a team of people. And so we have a running track, ninth through 12th grade, about all the things that we're trying to do, because again, it tells a story. It's their narrative. And so hopefully, over time, we're supporting Steve enough, or a student like Steve, that, you know, they're ready and able to graduate at the end. And so that's been a part of our success using this data. Our courageous leadership team here, I just want to highlight, it's tremendous, because it's 19 members. This is all volunteer. These people do a lot of great work for us and keep us moving forward. Our department chairs, just like the middle school, we've met, quite frankly, when I started 15 years ago, there wasn't really a school improvement team and a department team. And it's really interesting to me now, we have people standing in line to be a part of our courageous leadership team. And 15 years ago, it was taboo to be a part of the courageous leadership team. So it's really cool how over time, culture changes, and people evolve and accept those leadership responsibilities. Well, Dan Kohler was a big part and helped us move forward, so we appreciate his legacy that he's left behind. Just some points of pride academically, just like the middle school, the M-Step, as Brandy mentioned, we do very well. Our composite for the SAT, we continue to do very well. The thing I want to highlight, too, is down with our graduation rate at 95 or 96%. You know, I wonder why I made the change in there and it didn't work?
I didn't change it back.
This is just a Google Doc.
Well, that's why, then. Okay, so here's, I want you to go down to work-based learning a minute, okay? Here's a part of what I try to do every year to educate all of you, is remember, the graduation rate is for those students that enter in anywhere in high school as a freshman, most of them are students, and graduate within four years. That's a four-year cohort, follow me? Okay, good. So the work-based learning students are more, those are our special education students, typically in our cognitively impaired classroom, okay? Last year, we had five students that received certificate of completion. I'm sorry, it says three. I went back and checked the data later this afternoon and put it in there, but it's the wrong document. My point is, that's five. We had two students actually in the class here that attempted the GED. One completed it, the other one, God bless her, she's still trying to get through it, okay? But the important thing is, I always like to note is, just because they're graduating, okay, and should have walked across the stage, doesn't necessarily mean we give up on them. This young lady that hasn't completed the GED, about three weeks ago, I had a conversation with mom and dad via email, okay, just to see where she was, okay? There's issues that impact her ability to do it, but anyway. So I think what's important to note is, if we were to put these six students as a part of our overall, we would be sitting at basically 99%, almost 100% of this class graduated within four years, or received a certificate of completion, or received the GED. And I think that's what's important, because again, when we talk about pathways and academic opportunities, we all know not everyone follows the traditional track. And as board members, you want to, you want to know that we're doing our part, you're doing your part to make sure that we understand that everybody may not follow that traditional path.
I think you, I mean, you've done a good job over the years of explaining that to us. I think it's clear that there are some schools, maybe whatever their graduation rate is, they'll put that number up, and they don't know where that delta is between that number and 100. And we know, you've always, you know where they are.
Absolutely. And that's what you would expect, right? I mean, and I expected of ourselves, we expected, Diane did when she was there. And I think that's really important. The other thing, though, and we're trying to add additional AP classes, okay, I'll give you one. This year, we're adding AP Spanish. Next year, I'd like to add AP French. There may be an opportunity in the near future to look at adding AP physics. And so the nice thing about adding additional classes like that, the way that the scorecard is developed through the state of Michigan, is we get additional points for the diversity of classes that our kids are in and we offer. So I think it was Karen that mentioned the Cal two class, okay? We don't have it this year. We need to have it, because that AP level class helps us when it comes to the state determining what our scorecard number is. Makes sense? So the more pathways, the better for us, okay? So here's what was mentioned earlier about our tiers of intervention, and we shared this last year, I just want to share it again, in the many things that we do in and around it to support our students each and every day. So that was it.
Last year, the high school, I had the middle school at the Dutch Hills Homework Lab, and we've had kids that transitioned with me from eighth grade to ninth grade. They came to town, we had asked me, are we going to have that for me this year? And so we added, we split it half and half of middle school and ninth grade. So that's pretty cool, is showing that's making an impact.
That's great.
One of the things, too, it's been a while since spending this way. The GED that the kids now take is not the GED that we're, and much more difficult. It's a lot of testing, a lot of subjects, specific stuff.
That's a great point to make, because typically, if a student has maintained some connectivity to high school, okay, they have a better chance at probably studying a little bit and passing it than if they've somehow dropped out for an extended period of time and have been disconnected from high school. That's why, you know, if kids walk away, we really try to find out where they've relocated or haven't, and to keep them connected to it. To Dan's point, it was retooled about two to four years, two to three years ago, and it's a lot more challenging for students to take. Yeah. The other thing is, lastly, and I know we want to continue, is the summer school. I just want to make a point that we appreciate your support for us to be able to offer our summer school. It's a program that we get a lot of mileage out of. 99% of our students that attend summer school get at least a half a credit or more. And again, it's not skill recovery, it's credit recovery. And at a later date, I can come back, we can come back and explain that. But my point is that it's a really important part, because when kids feel success, they enter into the next school year with that level of confidence that really can move them at least into the latter part of October and early November before they start to crash a little bit. So I just mentioned, we get a lot of mileage out of that.
I've got to share something with check and connect. So there was a student that pulled up and said my name at a gas station, and he was one of the first kids in check and connect. And he had a brand-new Camaro and was doing very well.
Nice, nice, Mr. Kohler.
That was one of the things that was keeping him involved, and he now owns two restaurants that he opened with his mom, around his area, and is doing quite well.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had that in place probably eight years. We did that clear back when we actually did failure was not an option with Allen Blankenstein and then Anita Archer paired in there with us, and so we put that with a small cohort of kids. I'd be interested, Dan, later, maybe to know if you remember the students' name or not, because, yeah, we get, we get a lot of mileage out of that, too. Thanks for sharing that.
Anybody else have any other? Oh, that's awesome. Thanks for taking the time.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, don't you? Feel free to leave. I've been here a long time. Oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to board reports. Finance and Facilities Committee?
I don't think we've met since the last board meeting.
We have not.
Okay, we have not met since the last meeting.
Policy Personnel Committee?
Also, the nominee.
Okay, awesome. Items from board members?
I've got something.
Awesome.
I wanted to just report very briefly the MASB conference that I went to on students on boards back on October 10. It was a very well-attended conference. There were about 40 to 45 board members from around the state who were at this one-day meeting. And it was very interesting, and everybody who was there was very interested in just exploring the whole concept of what are we talking about with student service on boards, and where broadly, we talked about student voice as well. So, you know, just in brief, there was conversation about the ways in which schools in the state of Michigan, or even across the country, have students on boards. And, you know, typically, it's, it's of course not necessarily as voting numbers, and there are many different models for how to do it, but there are instances where it is happening. In Michigan, the statute is silent on it as to whether or not you do it or don't. So the take-home message there was that if a board chooses to do something, they probably should discuss it and do something with their bylaws to address what is happening with student service on boards. But there was, there are a lot of resources that are available to explore, to have conversation about what all of that would mean, and I can share that with everyone. The other thing we talked about was a little more, a broader representation of student voice, and how to get student engagement, and what is happening in the schools, and looking for meaningful student engagement. And a good part of that, we talked about, you know, a role of the board in that case is to set the tone for student engagement, to be encouraging. And there are, you know, many ways in which we can do that, whether it's having students present at the board meeting to do, present to us in some fashion, and it's involving them in presentations, and it's looking for opportunities in just the daily course of business, and what we need to do to be able to pull students in on an issue or topic, or whatever it might be, to have them engage and be able to be present and have their voice heard. So it was very interesting. There's a lot of interesting work out there. The gentleman who was the presenter and moderator is Adam Fletcher, I think was his name. And I have a summary that I put together, and I have a couple of links on it that can take you to information that you can look at. MASB has put together a specific place based on this conference that they're putting the information. And then Adam's group, sand dot org, has quite a bit of information, many, many books, of which you can tap before, but many are free. Many, many of them are free, so there is a lot of information to look at. And a lot of it is research-based, about what happens when students are engaged, and what happens to their learning performance and that sort of thing. So I have a little summary, and I'll share it with you, so you can look at it, and you can look at the resources there, and we can have more conversation in the community in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It is good to get out to those, to find those classes that are something where there's a new, a new thing, and it's always, I always thought was really helpful to meet people from other boards, and both ones where it gave me some good ideas, and others where I'm like, oh, thank goodness that, we're not having that tomorrow. And stuff, too. So, awesome. So you're going to get that, you're going to send us, awesome. Anybody else?
If I, if it's appropriate, I just kind of wanted to remind folks who may be watching about the upcoming vacancy on the board. And we have on our website, if you did not receive an email, but we do have on our website under the Board of Education website, information on how to apply if you are interested or know somebody who's interested. The deadline is November 20, no, I'm sorry, November 2nd, excuse me, I was looking at the wrong date. So, but the, all the information is on our website, and I encourage folks to take a look at that.
Well, that's a great segue into my thanking all you guys for the work that you've done on putting together, I think, a great process that you may find over time, is something that will need to be used periodically again. And I'm, I'm going to appreciate your leadership in trying to get that all set up, and Tammy, the stuff that was written and out, that's a great way to do it. I know you guys all worked on it. Appreciate that. And I, I will make my effective, my reservation, I think, November 15. So I'll be here to be at the November 12 meeting, and that should allow us time to tie up any loose ends from that meeting and fit within the parameters of that process that we set up. So, that means Molly, this is my last meeting with you, but I will still be here. Anybody else for, get down?
Just real quick, if, you know, just to remind people, this is the tournament time of the year, and so football is really exciting, and so we'll get a really good turnout, and we should, it's real close, but also cross-country and soccer and all those things. That really means a lot to those kids, if you can brave the weather a little bit. And the forecast looks good this week. It's going to actually be dry, and a lot of those, we had a lot of miserable Friday nights recently, so.
Well, that's true, and the cross-country venue has cider and donuts.
Yeah.
Right.
It's great to go up there and then right after.
Cider and pumpkins, you know.
Well, and following up on what Dan said, our high school and our middle school do such a great job with their sports. I know cross-country at the middle school this year had a great season as well. We also have so many parents who volunteer and kids who do for our younger and our youth athletes. So I know most of those teams are wrapping up their season and winter's game started. So it's, it's just great to see different ways that our families and our parents are involved. So, want to congratulate them.
And those of us with older kids know how important that was, to their whole, you know, who they are as adults now, too, so it's awesome to see. Great, okay. We will go on to action items, and we have two. We have the approval of the minutes from the October 4th, 2018 regular meeting, and approval of the purchase of the safety and security upgrades that you guys discussed last meeting, and we have in our drive. Does anyone need either of those, either of those pulled? Okay, would anyone care to make a motion regarding the action?
I would approve the two action items.
I will second.
All right, thank you, Greg and Molly. All in favor of approving the action items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, those pass, so go to our announcements. So the MASB Annual Leadership Conference is going to be in Grand Rapids, November 1 through 4. Let me, and or Michelle know if you are going to attend any part of it. I think we probably have to get that registered pretty soon, if that were the case. Finance Facilities Committee meeting on November 5th, 2018, at 3:30 PM here in the Hazlet Administration Building. And then Policy Personnel Committee is meeting November 7th at 4:30 PM here in the Hazlet Administration Building. And our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be held November 12th, 2018, at 7:00 PM here. Anybody, anything else? Okay, we could adjourn if someone wants to, we do that.
So.
All right. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All in favor of joining, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are done. Thank you.